And please confirm that it started.
Webinar has been started.
Thank you. Good morning and welcome to today's hybrid New York City Council hearing for the Subcommittee on Landmarks, Public Sightings and Dispositions. At this time, to minimize disruptions, please place all electronic devices to vibrate to silent mode. If you'd like to submit testimony, please send via email to landyouttestimony@council.myc.gov. Again, that is landyouttestimony@council.myc.gov. Thank you for your cooperation. Chair Lewis, we are ready to begin.
Good morning. I am Councilmember Farrah Lewis, Chair of the Subcommittee on Landmarks, Public Sightings and Dispositions. I'm not joined today by any colleagues yet, so they're on their way. Today, we will hold a public hearing on a number of items, and we will also vote on one item. I will now recognize the Subcommittee Council to explain today's hearing procedures.
Thank you, Chair Lewis. I am Angelina Martinez Rubio, Council to the Subcommittee. This meeting is being held in hybrid format. Members of the public who wish to testify may do so in person or via Zoom. Those wishing to testify by Zoom were asked to register for today's hearings. If you registered to testify and are not yet signed into Zoom, please sign in now and remain signed in until after you have testified. If you wish to testify via Zoom and have not registered, please go to www.council.nyc.gov/landuse to sign up now. If you have written testimony that you would like the Subcommittee to consider in addition to or instead of appearing before the Subcommittee, or if you require an accessible version of a presentation given at today's meeting, please email landyouttestimony@council.nyc.gov. Please indicate the LU number, project name, and the subject line of the email. Lastly, there may be extended pauses if we encounter technical problems. We ask that you please be patient as we work through these issues. Chair Lewis will now continue with today's agenda.
Thank you. I now open the public hearing on LU's 92 and 93 relating to the 2017 Grand Concourse proposal in Councilmember Sanchez's district in the Bronx. This proposal is an application submitted pursuant to Section 197(c) of the New York City Charter for the acquisition of property located at 22017 Grand Concourse, and the application submitted pursuant to Article 16 of the New York State General Municipal Law and Section 197(c) of the New York City Charter for the designation of an urban development action area, an urban development action area project, and the disposition of such property. Together, these actions would facilitate a nine-story mixed-use development containing approximately 33 affordable housing units. For anyone wishing to testify on this item remotely, if you have not already done so, you must register online, and you may do that now by visiting Council's website at At this time, I would now like to turn it over to Councilmember Sanchez. She is not here yet. So when she gets here.
Chair, she's on her way up.
Okay.
So we can start calling and swearing in the witnesses, and we can take her remarks.
Okay, let's do that.
So you can continue with the script.
Right. So please call first panel.
So can we please have the panelists, which includes Lena Saad, sorry if I mispronounce all your names, Samantha Magistro, and Jay Fox. And on hand available for questions, we have Ted Weinstein, I see you Ted, online, Rosa Kelly, Thompson Kao, and Crystal Eng. So panelists, please take your seats. I know it's tight in here, but I just need to swear you all in. I'll give you a few minutes to join the panel, and when you guys are ready, I'll swear you in. We will stand at ease for a few minutes while we resolve some logistics over here on our end. Give us just a second. So we're ready to continue to swearing in the panel, but before we do that, since Councilmember Sanchez is here, good morning, Councilmember. Are you ready to give some opening remarks?
No, I'm not. I'm sorry.
You would like to just wait for the question and answer. Okay, so we'll continue and swear them in. So panelists, can you please raise your right hand, and I know, Mr. Weinstein, you're online, and I need you to answer the question. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before the Subcommittee and in your answer to all Councilmember questions? Thank you. Give us a second while the Chair gives you the go-ahead to begin.
Sorry about that. Thank you, so for the viewing public, if you need an accessible version of this presentation, please send an email request to landyouttestimony@council.nyc.gov. And now the applicant team may begin. Panelists, as you begin, I'll just ask you to please restate your name and organization for the record. You can start, you can begin. Is there anything that you need on the?
Can we pull up the presentation?
Yes.
Good morning, Councilmembers and Subcommittee Chair. My name is Lena Saad. I'm here with HPD. I'm joined by Jay Fox, representing the development team. We're here, should I wait for the presentation?
Should we wait for the presentation to get loaded?
We're trying to load your presentation. If you would like to wait, we can.
Sure, we'll wait.
It's probably a good idea.
There we go. You can just say next whenever you need them to change the slide.
Okay, thank you. We're here to discuss 2017 Grand Concourse, which is currently in ULEP. We're seeking Council approval for the following land use actions. Next slide. Next slide?
Nope.
Oh, sorry. Previous slide. Slide number two.
Nope. You want to introduce the development team?
One slide before. Okay, excellent, thank you. Okay, we're great. Okay, so we're seeking Council approval for the following land use actions. One, acquisition of property by the city. Two, disposition of city-owned land. Three, designation and approval of an urban development action area and project. We're also seeking approval for an Article 11 tax exemption. 2017 Grand Concourse will be a 33-unit, 100% affordable, new construction project with a supers unit in the Mount Hope neighborhood of the Bronx using HPD's Neighborhood Construction Program. NCP is a program that facilitates relatively small, multifamily, affordable, mixed-income developments. The site is currently occupied by a vacant building and was designated to Bronx Pro through the third-party transfer program to rehabilitate the vacant building on the site. However, due to the existing site conditions, it was determined that the building would not be physically and financially feasible to preserve. Therefore, a new construction project was proposed. Next slide. So currently, we're in the ULEP process. To date, both Bronx Community Board Five and Borough President Gibson has recommended approval of this project, and the City Planning Commission voted to approve this application. Next slide. Great, I'll turn it over to our development partners to take us through the rest of the project.
Good morning. My name is Jay Fox. I'm with Bronx Pro Group. I'm joined by Crystal Eng of Curtiss &amp; Ginsburg Architects, the architects for the project. And I apologize to the Councilmembers, I wasn't counting on the presentation being behind me, so I'm inadvertently and unintentionally turning my back to you. Bronx Pro Group is a mission-based, family-owned WBE. We're based in the Bronx, specifically in the Morris Heights neighborhood of the Bronx, not very far at all from the subject property. We've been doing property management and development since 1988, development more recently, and we've got about 33,000 units developed and under management, and I will add that they're all affordable housing, largely through city-owned programs, primarily HPD. I'm joined by Curtiss &amp; Ginsburg, and we've done many great projects with Curtiss &amp; Ginsburg, including two that are currently finishing the NCP program for which this is proposed. We love working with Curtiss &amp; Ginsburg because of their excellent design principles and their understanding of affordable housing principles in HPD, as well as their green expertise, and sustainability is extremely important to Bronx Pro Group. Next slide. Okay, so as you can see here, the site on the left shows the site context, and it's hard to see, but it's that white building on the corner where Crystal sort of developed a massing. And then, on the right-hand side, that's the site, shows the site context. The green shows the Grand Concourse Special Use District where this building is a part of, and it's worth noting that while we're not asking for any changes in bulk or use, that this is entirely as of right within the Special Concourse District. As you'll see in the coming slides, we've tried to hew to the spirit of the design of the Grand Concourse Special District. However, there are actually no design guidelines that come along with the Grand Concourse District. Next slide, please. So on the left, you can see the site as it currently exists, although there's even more scaffolding there now than when this slide was taken, and on the right is what was proposed. On the left, you can see that it's, the building is in very, very poor condition. In order to rehabilitate it, the maximum number of units we could have gotten was eight, and what we are proposing instead is 33 affordable studios. They're all one- and two-bedroom units, plus a supers unit, and they're 30% to 80% of AMI. The building will be nine stories. You can see that that brings it up to the same line as the adjacent buildings. And a few things to note. First of all, Bronx Pro Group is committed to family housing, and we are extremely aware and sensitive to the fact that this building was not a great opportunity for larger units. It is because of the extremely narrow footprint of the building. You know, we would love for all buildings to be able to house larger families. This building, in order to get enough units, in order to really maximize the use of the site, it wasn't deemed feasible, though we, Curtiss &amp; Ginsburg did try and get a couple of, some more two-bedroom units in there. I will also note that the adjacent building is a commercial building, and yes, indeed, their lotline windows will be boarded over, but it should also be understood that we've entered into an agreement with the adjacent building owner. We have, there's been an easement that's been cleared, we have site access, there's been long discussions and negotiations with them, and there are no residents that would suddenly become illegal, and the building owner is well aware and very involved in the development process. And that's sort of, that was a concern that came up a lot in our pre-review, and so that should just be understood. Next slide. Crystal, do you want to talk a little bit about the design?
Sure, yeah. As Jay mentioned, hi, Crystal Lang for Curtiss Ginsburg Architects. Yeah, as Jay mentioned, we really wanted to follow the Art Deco spirit of the Grand Concourse, so we did, our choice of materials is brick with also the tan brick that is pretty similar to the building next door and pretty represented in Art Deco design, with some more decorative accents in the canopy, as well as lots of visibility on the ground floor lobby. There is also an amenity on the first floor, which is the residence exercise room, which they'll get plenty of daylight in there, and then the also accents would be the horizontal brick striations. That's kind of typical of also the Art Deco design, and some accents here that we've located at the windows, which is this bronze copper color that will also be followed up in the canopy and the decorative signage at the canopy. Next.
So the building has a lot, we've packed as many amenities into this small footprint as we possibly can. The downside of solar panels not being feasible due to the building's small footprint is the upside of being able to put a roof deck on the building. We've got a small roof deck area that will have, that will be a greenish roof. There are also in the building, there's, the lobby features, an art wall, Bronx Pro Group likes to include art in all of our buildings. There's laundry on-site, bike storage, and an exercise room, as well as the required on-site super who will be available 24/7. Next slide. The cellar plan shows in beige where the laundry room is, and in blue, that's a bicycle storage room. This came up in some of the questions, you know, why bicycle storage room, there's going to be seniors, et cetera. Bike storage is required by the zoning resolution, and we have found that in our buildings with seniors, that seniors do actually use it, often to store extra shopping carts or extra mobility devices, and we have found that they've been well-used. So I think that the seniors, as well as the other non-senior households, will enjoy that. You can see there's an elevator, right, where that big X is, it says elevator, and then the laundry room is directly across from the elevator. They will have to go around the corridor to get to the bike storage room, but the laundry room is very intentionally placed immediately across from the elevator to maximize access. Next slide, please. And then, this is ground floor. You can see on the left-hand side that beige area is the lobby, the green area is the exercise room, which will be for the use of tenants and furnished by, as a course of the development. There will be no fees associated with use of the exercise room. Next slide. That's a typical floor plan. Did you have anything you wanted to add about the floor plan? No, I think it's a floor plan. This one, you can see there's a one-bedroom apartment in the middle, another one-bedroom apartment, and then on the end, there's a studio, and then this corner unit is a two-bedroom apartment. And that's going to be typical going up all nine stories. Next slide, please. Okay, so here's the unit mix and the income limits. As Lena mentioned, NCP is a mixed-income program. However, we also include, we have a set aside of formerly homeless seniors, which will be under the heirs program. Also, in response to concerns raised by the Community Board, we added an additional tier for 33 apartments, that's 10%, at 30% of AMI, and then we are serving a mix of incomes otherwise. And you can see there are nine studios, 17 one-bedrooms, and seven two-bedrooms plus a supers unit. Next slide. Okay, so we take very seriously local hiring plan. As I said, we are a Bronx-based organization, and we also do our own construction through an affiliate Home Builders One. Creating local employment opportunities is a huge priority for us, so we've listed some of the measures we plan to take underneath. We will list all employment opportunities on our website, along with an email address that folks can contact. We will also be providing, it says free Local Law 196 training, just so for anybody who's not aware, that's the Local Law that requires all construction workers on a site to have OSHA training. It was a 30-hour training, I think the requirement may be a little bit more by now, but it's a minimum 30-hour training. They must be OSHA-certified, even a laborer has to be OSHA-certified. So we like that we're offering this on the site, because it would enable people not just to work on our site, but if they wanted to seek out other construction opportunities as well, it would be necessary for them to, for anybody, even an unskilled laborer, to participate in the construction industries in New York. So we're going to be providing that, along with flagger and scaffolding classes to all community residents. We're going to be working with a non-building skills, which is an industry-based nonprofit to place local hires, and we'll also be recruiting locally for the Super Importer through Sustainable South Bronx, an organization that we've partnered with before, and also we'll be working with Here to Hear, a youth services organization in the Bronx, to provide summer internships to local youth in our property management offices. Bronx Pro Group currently has approximately 100 full-time employees, and about 70% of us, me included, live in the Bronx. And we will, of course, be working closely with Councilmember Sanchez's office and the local community board to promote further job and training employees. Next slide, please. Okay.
Thank you for the presentation. I'm going to now ask Councilmember Sanchez if she has any questions, and after that, if any of the members of the committee have any questions, you can go right after. Councilmember Sanchez?
Hey, thank you so much, Chair, and good morning, and good morning to Bronx Pro, good morning to HPD. So just by way of starting, stop multitasking. Just to start, I want to thank you for the ongoing conversations about this project over the last few months. Actually, the, so that everyone knows, the day that I was first briefed on this was the day that there was a shooting, a shootout in front of my office, and so that cut our meeting short, but everyone was okay, we're here, baby is here. It's a good situation now. So I want to thank you for the ongoing conversations. I want to thank you for being responsive. Bronx Pro is a developer and sort of owner in our community, as was said, that has been doing this work for a long time. You know, I get a lot of complaints, housing is the number-one issue that constituents come into our office for. I could not tell you that Bronx Pro tenants have ever come to us with concerns. So thank you for being a responsible and caring landlord for those that are there. You know, but one of the things that you tried to be responsive on, but we didn't get quite there, is the affordability mix of the building. And so, you know, when you came to us, I said, look, the affordability mix is not reflective of the people in my community. Our AMIs in the community are very low, and to that, Bronx Pro actually made the development of 33 units more affordable, added three, a new AMI band of 30% of AMI at three units, which is 10% of the development. And so that's really where my question comes in. I had a lot of conversation with HPD. We had some back and forth, thanks for answering my questions, about what is the amount of subsidy that is going into a project like this project? And why is it that we can't get to deeper levels of affordability so that we can have this conversation in public as well? And what I got back from HPD was that there is about $670,000 per unit being subsidized. That's the net present value of the whole, the lifetime of the units, of the affordable housing there. And so why isn't an amount like $670,000 per dwelling enough to subsidize deeper levels of affordability at, you know, a greater band of 30% of AMI, or 35% of AMI, or 20% of AMI, which is more like what we make in District 14?
I don't know if HPD wants to answer that, or if you want the developer to?
I think this is a question that HPD would probably need to do a little bit more research on, and we can get back to you with an explanation for that.
Yeah, and you, just to sort of foreshadow that you will be hearing more of this from my colleagues, so, yep.
Yeah. I can offer just one suggestion as a developer, if that's all right. One of the challenges of a small building is, you know, there are certain building systems that you have to put in place, like regardless of the number of units. You have to have a basement, which means excavate, and I don't need to tell you, in the Bronx, that means rock, and that means a lot of money. I have to, we have to excavate that basement, whether we're building 30 units or 150 units. I also, because it's nine stories tall, in order to maximize our print, we have to put up a hoist. We have a building that's going up on 927, 925 Cortlandt Avenue, that's got 150 That's got 150 units, same hoist, spread over 150 units as opposed to 30. We have one roof, we have one boiler. It's all, it's, many of those fixed costs on these smaller buildings are very, very challenging. So I think that you're right to look at the cost per unit, but it is, you're always going to see on these smaller buildings, these incredible, these costs are just very, very high, and it makes it very challenging to do these in fill sites that are very, in a cost-effective way, that are so important to our communities. So that would just be sort of my perspective as a developer, that it's, these fixed costs are very, very high.
Absolutely. And, you know, one thing that I say a lot, and I will continue to say, is that the public needs more transparency. We need to know more about what exactly, what are the costs of this excavation? What are the costs of these building systems? How is this all coming together to require this level of subsidy? Because it's not my money, it's not our money, right? It's New York City's money, and so we want to understand that better. Because this, it is a lot with a 420(c) and Article 11. And we're not, we're not, you're not going after Lytech right now, right? You're receiving more capital subsidy from HPD upfront. So it's a lot, so we just want to understand that. This site is, this is an ongoing maintenance issue that we've been talking to you about. This is actually two blocks away from my office. So before, I was too pregnant to be on the subway, I would walk by and the lights would be off, right, in front of the building. And so I know we've been in touch about it, but it's been inconsistent, right? The lights will go off, and then we'll contact you, and then you'll turn them on. And so this is a safety issue, so I want to just kind of make sure that you're, even now as you approach hopefully groundbreaking and all of that, what is the plan to make sure that those lights stay on and that we're keeping that block safe?
So, yeah, first of all, we agree that this is, it's a really critical issue, and we, and as recently as, over the weekend, you or your office, I'm not, let us know about it, we sent out the electric-
I am my office.
Well, I don't, like, you know, I don't want to, I don't, I didn't take the call, so I don't want to, you know, represent who called. But we had, so, the last time this came up, we made sure that there were, we added two additional solar panels. Our challenge on the site is that we obviously don't have power there, you've seen the building. It would not be good if there were power there, that would be a bad situation, it would be potentially unsafe, so we don't have power there. So we added two more solar panels. Unfortunately, because of weather and stuff last week, the solar panels drained. So now, in addition to the three solar panels and starting it up again, we're trying to negotiate with the next-door property owner to sort of borrow some of their electricity so that we can keep it well-lit. But we are definitely, we are with you, we are committed, and we agree that, like, there is no real reason that that light should be off. But right now, that's the permanent, that's what we're taking as our next step.
Great, thank you. And my last question is, you talked about the ground floor, we've talked about the ground floor. You know, one of the things that I really want to see in any developments that are coming online, especially in District 14, because we are so dense, is that we're contributing to that feel on the ground, right? That the more active the spaces are on the ground floor, the safer it is, the more eyes on the street and all of that. But you've shared that the floor print is not sufficient, so you said a little bit about it, but how did you end up with bike, with a bike room in the ground floor?
Well, the bike room, so Chris, this is really gets to zoning, and Crystal's really the best person to talk about this, but the bike room in the basement is, my understanding is a zoning requirement. But Crystal, can you talk about the...
Yeah, so the bike room is located in the cellar and not on the first floor, so you do need to take an elevator to access that. And it is a zoning requirement for one bike storage for every two apartments and less for seniors. So there is accounted for that maybe seniors would use less, that amenity less.
Okay, got it. Thank you, thank you so much, Chair, thank you all. You know, as I always say with these projects, these are the tools we have today that, you know, through government, we have to continue to refine, to make sure that we're getting, the public is getting what we need to be receiving from these level of subsidies. But Bronx Pro is a great actor, I'm happy to have you in my district, and this is a good project. So I will be supporting this project today, and I hope my colleagues will join me in doing so.
Thank you, Councilmember Sanchez. I now invite my colleagues to ask questions, if anyone has questions. Perfect. Since there's no more questions, the applicant panel is excused. Council, are there any members of the public who wish to testify on the 2017 grant course proposal?
Chair, there are no, excuse me, no members of the public online to testify, so if anyone is here in the room that would like to testify on this item, please see one of the sergeants to fill out a slip, because I don't have anyone other than the applicant panel with slips. So if anyone is here to testify, please raise your hand. Chair, it doesn't look like there's anyone else, so we can close the hearing.
All right, seeing none, no members of the public who wish to testify on LUs 92 and 93 relating to the 2017 grant course proposal, the public hearing is now closed, and the items are laid over. We will now vote to approve LUs 92 and 93 relating to the 2017 grant course proposal in Councilmember Sanchez's district in the Bronx. As we just heard, the proposal would facilitate the development of a new nine-story mixed-use building with approximately 33 affordable housing units. I now call for a vote to approve LUs 92 and 93 relating to the 2017 grant course proposal. Council, please call a roll.
Chair Lewis?
I vote aye.
Councilmember Felice?
Aye.
Councilmember De La Rosa? Councilmember Marte?
Aye.
Councilmember Nurse?
Aye.
Councilmember Ung?
Aye.
By a vote of six in the affirmative, no negatives, no abstentions, the item is approved and will be referred to the Full Land Use Committee.
I just quickly wanted to share, we've been joined by Councilmembers Felice, Nurse, De La Rosa, Baron, Sanchez, Williams, Ung. Did I miss anybody else? And Marte. We will stand at ease.
Just for you, for those of you who are here to testify on Gateway, we're going to do that item next. So if you want to just start getting yourselves settled in the podium.
All right, we're going to start. All right, we're back. I now open the public hearing on pre-considered LUs related to ULP numbers C220405HAK and C220406HUK for the Gateway Site 26A and Phase 5 redevelopment proposal in Councilmember Barron's District in Brooklyn. This proposal seeks UDAP- This proposal seeks UDAP approval and an amendment to the Fresh Creek Urban Renewal Plan to facilitate a new eight-story mixed-use development with approximately one-hundred-and-ninety-one affordable dwelling units and approximately three-thousand-four-hundred square feet of community facility space. An amendment to the F C U R P to further facilitate the development of, of nine four-story buildings containing approximately five-hundred-and-sixty affordable dwelling units in the Spring Creek neighborhood of East New York. For anyone wishing to testify on this item remotely, if you have not already done so, you must register online and you can do that visiting council's website at council.nyc.gov backslash land use. I now call Councilmember Barron to provide remarks.
Uh, thank you very much, Chair. I really appreciate you giving me this opportunity, you know, I have a big housing program over there, and public housing, where NYCHA is contracting to folk and not to us, but anyway, that's a whole nother issue, that's not for this hearing, I just thought I'd, I get so confused sometimes with so many hearings. But on this particular project, I just want my council members to hold up till we come back and complete the rest of the negotiations around this project. But I must say, it is favorable moving forward, the affordability is real and they have a history of doing real one-hundred percent affordability, that's a good piece. When we came back and said we need to lower the height of the buildings to four and break them up, they did that as well. The problem, the challenge we have in is around studios, too many studios. And we have in our community, you know, three people, four people, five people in the family, and then when you say, well, this is for the seniors, the seniors need more dignity than the studio. Seniors need to be able to say, when we have visitors coming, they don't have to see our bedroom too. So if they're a senior, don't think that soon as you hear a senior, they should have a studio. No, they should have a one-bedroom apartment, so when they have guests come over, after all that they've done in life, that they should be able to say, hey, you know, this is my kitchen and living room area, and my bedroom area is not in their sight. So we do have to lower, for the dignity of our seniors, we have to lower the studio count, and I know many developers, they make more on more studios, they're smaller, they can put more in the developments, and they make more, but it ain't about anybody making more money, it's about the dignity of our seniors. So we really got to get that studio number correct. And Community Board Five was confused, they voted on a different part of the proposal. They thought it was one section of it, so they voted yes and said that they'll wait before they vote on the other section, dealing with studios and stuff like that. But they now understand that it's one proposal, one proposal. So their yes vote was for one part of the project, and they still have a lot of concerns that I'll be addressing with you when we do our further, further, uh, meetings. But this is an excellent project, we just gotta work out those kinks, which I don't think will be a problem, but I'll let you know how it goes, and thanks once again, Chair, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Councilmember. Council, please call the first panel for this item.
Uh, the panel for this item, and apologies if I mispronounce your name, Shushma Pramod and Arshad Bakas from HPD. And we also have available for question and answers, Hala Salih, Karen Goodrich, Unisa, Dean Oliver, Lawrence Bell, and Maryam Al Shamali. Did I miss anyone? Are you all here?
Council, please administer the affirmation.
Can you raise, panelists, can you please raise your right hand and answer the following question? Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before the subcommittee and in answers to all the councilmember questions? Thank you.
Thank you for the viewing public. If you need an accessible version of this presentation, please send an email request to landyouttestimony@council.nyc.gov. And now the applicant team may begin, panelists. As you begin, I'll just ask you to please restate your name and organization for the record, let us know when you're ready.
Thank you, can you hear me?
Yep.
Um, hi, good morning, Chair Lewis, councilmembers, my name is Shushma Pramod, and I'm the lead planner for the Gateway Site twenty-six A and Phase Five project. I represent the Department of Housing Preservation and Development, HPD. Um, and I'm joined today by my colleague Hala Salih, who's Deputy Director of Brooklyn Planning at HPD as well. Um, and members of the development team, Arshad Bakas from NEOMIA HDFC, who will also be presenting with me, um, and members from Menadnog Development and Bernheimer Architects. Uh, we're all very excited, uh, to be here today to present the Gateway Site twenty-six A and Phase Five projects, which is being proposed on Beacon City on Land in the Spring Creek area of East New York. Um, next slide, please. Thank you. Um, just a really brief agenda today, I'll begin by introducing the ULP actions and then hand it over to the development team to speak a little bit about the background of the area, um, introduce the team, and then delve deeper into the development projects. Next slide, please. Um, so the Gateway Site twenty-six A and Phase Five project was certified on April twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-two, and will facilitate the development of one new construction, uh, affordable senior housing building on Site twenty-six C A of the Fresh Creek Urban Renewal Area. Um, and it will facilitate a building typology change in the Phase Five region of, um, the Gateway NEOMIA Development. Uh, for Site twenty-six A, we are seeking approvals for urban, urban development action area designation and project approval for the disposition of city on land and, uh, an amendment to the Fresh Creek Urban Renewal Plan. Uh, this amendment would allow the change of designated use of Site twenty-six A from public and semi-public uses to residential use. Um, it would allow for the increase in overall units in the urban renewal area uh, to account for the units being proposed at Site twenty-six A, and it will allow, uh, the project at Site twenty-six A to be developed up to eight stories tall. For Phase Five, we are seeking an amendment for the, uh, to the Fresh Creek Urban Renewal Plan, uh, as well as an amendment to the project summary of the Gateway Estates to UDAP. Um, the amendment to the Urban Renewal Plan will allow merging of certain urban renewal sites, um, and we will also assign maximum developable units for each of these sites. Um, next slide, please. I'm gonna hand this over to Arshad.
Okay. Thank you, Shushma, um, councilmembers, thank you for having us. Um, I'm Arshad Bakas with NEOMIA HDFC, we're one of the joint venture partners in this deal, along with Menadnog Development. Um, I'll give you a little background on the site. Um, this NEOMIA Spring Creek is, uh, part of a forty-acre redevelopment of what was formerly a landfill, a municipal landfill. Um, so far, the, in totality, the site is going to produce over twenty-six-hundred units. Um, I think it's twenty-six sixty-two, um, eventually. So far, we've have, uh, tremendous commercial space, the Gateway Mall is to the south end of Spring Creek. Um, that's about over a million square foot of commercial space and was developed by, related in companies. There's a ShopRite, Home Depot, Burlington, uh, Best Buy, and several other, um, stores there. Uh, so far, we've built and produced roughly six-hundred units, we have about a thousand more to go pending the approval of this ULP application. Next slide, please. Um, so as I mentioned, I'm with NEOMIA HDFC, and NEOMIA HDFC is the development arm of the East Brooklyn Congregation, um, also known as EBC. We are pleased to partner with Menadnog Development to develop these Site twenty-six A and Phase Five and other phases of Spring Creek. The development team further consists of Bernheimer Architect, serving as the architect for Site twenty-six A, and M H, M H G Architect for Phase Five. Um, we have several other consultants that are working on this deal, and, um, you can see them listed here. Uh, for time's sake, I'll just keep moving to the, the other slide, next slide, please. Uh, very briefly about Site twenty-six A, the site, um, is expected to produce about a hundred-and-eighty-nine units, inclusive of one senior unit, so it's one-hundred-and-eighty-nine affordable units with one su-, uh, not senior, sorry, one super unit. So for a total of a hundred-and-eighty-nine. Um, this project will be financed using the HPD SARA program, um, and will be a hundred percent affordable. Next slide. Uh, just to orient us a little of where Site twenty-six A is located, um, usually I'm presenting with, uh, two monitors and have my cheat sheet to the left, um, trying to go off of memory here. So, uh, Site twenty-six A is sorta in the middle, but maybe a little to the right of this rendering, uh, of this map. Um, it's yellow jagged lines, directly to the western end of it is the Berman Playground. Um, that is, uh, city-owned and, uh, managed and operated by the Parks Department. It is paved, it has active play for children, and it also has, uh, several comfort stations for residents to use. Um, if we explore this map sorta clockwise, um, directly, uh, west of the site, where the gray shaded areas are, those are the previous homeownership phases of the Spring Creek development. We go a little north, we'll see Jefferson Square, I'm sorry, Jefferson Field, uh, that's a baseball field over there. And directly east across the street from the site is a mid-density development, uh, developed by the Arcers and companies in, uh, partnership with the state. Then we come down a little bit more, there is the Brooklyn Development Center, and, uh, we also note here on this map that the site is served by several bus lines, the B thirteen, B eighty-four, and the Q eight. Um, all three of these bus lines terminate on Irkstein Street where we're located, but there are also several other buses that pass by here that goes to Gateway Center, and, uh, towards the north of the site, there are also a couple other bus lines there. Um, and then you can see immediately to the south, there is the Gateway Shopping Center, again, about a million square foot of, uh, commercial space there, with ShopRite being on the easternmost end of the site and very close to Site twenty-six A. Uh, next slide, please. So specifically about Site twenty-six A, as I mentioned, this would be a hundred-and-eighty-nine units, um, all a hundred percent affordable. The site will benefit from project-based Section Eight vouchers, which means none, none of the tenants will pay more than thirty percent of their income in rent, I'm gonna say it in another way, all tenants will pay thirty percent or less of their rent, of their income towards rent. Um, in addition to having the residential units on the floors above, we also have social welfare space such as a community room reserved for residents. We have a fitness room, we also have counseling offices for case management services, and those offices will be occupied by Breaking Ground, who is providing services, um, pursuant in the HRA contract for social services. Um, in addition, we have onsite security, um, there's a front desk, there's going to be security onsite. In addition to that, there's, there are cameras, and we also, the entire Spring, Spring Creek development is patrolled by a third-party, um, security company. Uh, three-thousand square foot of community facility space, this is space that will be rented to a tenant. Um, and then we also have, towards the back of the building, we have roughly forty-four-hundred or forty-five-hundred square foot of landscaped space, this was all, will also be planned green space, paved with planting beds, et cetera. Um, some of our sustainability features include solar panels and a green roof. Um, next slide, please. Uh, thank you. To quickly run through sorta what, what we plan on, uh, for the ground floor, we have both, um, the ground floor will house both residential units and non-residential uses, so towards, um, this side of the site, uh, the yellow boxes are residential units. On the ground floor also will be the counseling offices, a space for the, um, case management services, fitness room, community facility use. And then towards the end of the U, where you see the big box white space, that's the community facility space. Um, very important on this ground floor plan is also the landscaped green space that we see there, forty-four-hundred, and immediately behind that, uh, ten parking spaces. Uh, thank you, next slide. Uh, that's it for my portion of the presentation, I'll turn it back over to Shushma to keep, uh, to speak about Phase Five. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, so Phase Five, uh, really is the final phase of the Gateway Estates Two Large-Scale Development Project, um, and it's located to the northwestmost region of the Spring Creek area. It's bound by Flatlands Avenue to the north and Gateway Drive to the west, and the area also contains, um, space for a future playground, as you can see, uh, on the map up here. Um, next slide, please. Thank you. Um, so Phase Five is part of this application because we really want to facilitate a, uh, change in building typology. Um, it was previously envisioned in twenty-nineteen that this region would have a number of four-story, eight-unit buildings that we've been calling octets, um, to contain about five-hundred-and-sixty, uh, affordable housing units. Um, this change now will allow for a change, um, for, to build nine multifamily buildings, uh, which will remain at four stories tall, and it will house the same five-hundred-and-sixty units. Each of the new buildings will have approximately forty or eighty, uh, units. So consolidating these buildings really, uh, does help us achieve higher, uh, building and construction, uh, efficiencies as well as added amenities like elevators and common spaces, like community rooms, which we weren't able to get in the previous, um, format. Um, it would also allow for streamlined buildings of systems like fire alarms and sprinkler systems. The units in this phase, um, like most other phases, are, uh, will be developed through HPD's extremely low and low-income affordability program. Um, also call Ella. Next slide, please. Thank you. So the amendment to the Urban Renewal Plan that we're seeking here will allow us to merge four urban renewal sites that you see on the left side to two urban renewal sites that you see on the right side, um, in the, the pink and the blue sides. We would also assign, uh, developable units to each of these, uh, sites, but the overall unit count in the phase remains the same of five-hundred-and-sixty. Uh, we would also, um, update minimal acreages to Sites, uh, six A and seven A, which only reflects recent, um, surveys and such. Next slide, please. Um, so merging of these urban renewal sites, like I said before, will help us build these larger multifamily buildings, um, as you can see on this illustration up here. Um, and I really just want to end by saying that, um, and as Arshad mentioned before, uh, Phase Five is this final phase of this decade-long, even more, uh, effort in developing what was previously wetlands and landfill areas to create over twenty-five-hundred units of affordable housing. It has created quality rental, homeownership, and senior housing opportunity in this area. So we really are excited to sort of tie this up soon. Thank you. Uh, we're, that concludes our presentation, and hope to have any questions? I'm gonna next slide.
Thank you. Um, two quick questions, have you found an operator for the proposed community space?
Sure. Uh, good afternoon, good morning, everyone, uh, Dean Oliver from Menadnog Development. Um, thank you for having us. To answer your question, uh, we reached out, or when we met with, uh, the former councilmember, um, members of the Homeowners Association expressed interest in being able to operate the space. Uh, we asked that they submit a proposal for the use of the space. Um, and so, um, in con-, uh, in conjunction with the Homeowners Association from Spring Creek, uh, the NEOMIA East Brooklyn, um, Local Development Corporation also submitted a proposal, um, with, along with Sisters With Purpose. Uh, we had a few preliminary questions for them, primarily around, um, their financial capacity to be able to carry the space, um, and provide adequate programming. Um, we, we loved the fact that they were looking for, um, opportunities to do local hiring, training onsite as well as programming for after-school youth, um, as well as, um, working, you know, uh, programming for seniors as well. Um, but we just wanted to get a little bit more information about the organizations and their capacity to be, to be able to actually, um, cover the rent for the space. Um, so we're just waiting on, on them to, uh, respond to us with some more of that detail. Uh, we also want to make that opportunity open to other organizations that might be interested. Um, and so it's, it's an ongoing conversation, we, we do, uh, look forward to being able to really engage, uh, local organizations, uh, to be able to operate that space.
How are you making it available to other operators?
I think at some point in their future, we'll, you know, once, once we get through ULP, we will probably, you know, issue, if not reach out to, um, potential tenants. Um, you know, we, we have been, you know, keeping an open line with, um, you know, these local organizations, um, but, you know, we'll probably reach out to a few of the tenants that we think could potentially be good, um, operators for the space. Uh, and once we've received a number of bids, we'll, we'll start to make an evaluation and make sure that we keep all the necessary states. make sure that we keep all the necessary stakeholders involved.
All right. Thank you. Do any of our colleagues have any questions on this project? Okay. If there are no further questions, the applicant panel is excused. Counsel, are there any members of the public who wish to testify on Gateway Site 26A and Phase 5 redevelopment proposal?
Chair, there are no members of the public waiting to testify online. And again, I'll make the same announcement. If any of you here in the hearing room are here to testify on this project, just come to the front and fill out a slip, because so far I don't have anyone. So it doesn't appear like it, Chair. So we can go ahead and close the hearing.
All right. Being there are no other members of the public who wish to testify on the pre-considered LU's related to U-LAB application numbers C-220405HAK and C-220406HUK relating to Gateway Sites 26A and Phase 5 redevelopment proposal, the public hearing is now closed and this item is laid over.
Before we open the next hearing, if we could have the landmarks, the LPC staff just come to the podium, because that's the next hearing we're going to do. So Kate, if you can come up here and get settled while the chair opens the hearing.
To continue with today's meeting, I will now open the public hearing on LU 108 relating to the Cambria Heights 222 Street Historic District designation, which includes approximately 46 buildings and Councilmember Williams' district in Queens. For anyone wishing to testify on this item remotely, if you have not already done so, you must register online. And you may do that now by visiting Council, Council's website at council.nyc.gov/landuse. Counsel, please call the first panel for this item.
I believe the council member would like to provide some remarks. Sorry, Chair, I think your, your remarks didn't have that, that opening.
Councilmember Williams, you start.
Thank you so much, Chair. I would like to commend the applicant team for their consideration of the history of Cambria Heights and their engagement with the community throughout the public review process. I know it was a pretty lengthy process. I'm proud to support the designation of two blocks in my district as a historic landmark. And I hope more historic districts in Eastern Queens will be designated in the coming years. These blocks were developed in the early 1930s on our well-preserved, architecturally distinctive, and within the Cambria Heights neighborhood. This will be the second landmarked area in my district. I'm very excited about that, because there's not a lot of Black and Brown communities that can say that and what's, and will stand out with its whimsical and imaginative storybook style as examples of Black and Caribbean homeownership. So thank you so much, Chair, and again to LPC.
Thank you, Councilmember. Counsel, please call the first panel on this item.
So the panel for this item is Kate Lemus-McHale. And available for Q and A, we have Sonia Gior and Benjamin Wallen.
Counsel, please administer the affirmation.
Can you please raise your right hand? Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before the subcommittee and in your answers to all council member questions?
I do.
Thank you.
Thank you. For the viewing public, if you need an accessible version of this presentation, please send an email request to landusetestimony@council.nyc.gov. Director Lemus-McHale, excuse me if I butchered that, I'll just ask you to please restate your name and organization for the record. You may all begin. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Lewis, and subcommittee members. And thank you, Councilmember Williams, also for your comments this morning. I am Kate Lemus-McHale, Director of Research at the Landmarks Preservation Commission. And I'm joined by Sonia Gior and Ben Wallen. And we thank you very much for the opportunity to present the Cambria Heights 222 Street and 227th Street Historic Districts, both designated on June 28, 2022. Could we have the next slide, please? Thank you. Both districts comprise remarkably cohesive and intact groups of storybook-style rowhouses, incorporating Tudor-style elements, built in 1931 in the Cambria Heights neighborhood of southeastern Queens. Next, please. The Cambria Heights 222nd Street District contains 46 rowhouses between 115th Road and 116th Avenue. It was developed by a company called Selective Homes and designed by the Queens Architectural Firm of Monda and Bertolazzi. Next slide, please. Five blocks away, the Cambria Heights 222nd Street Historic District contains 50 houses between 116th Avenue and Linden Boulevard. And it was developed by the Queens firm of Wallaceoff Brothers. Next, please. These districts are architecturally distinctive, and they fit within LPC's equity framework as we seek to increase designations in communities not as well represented by landmarks and to better tell the story of all New Yorkers. A predominantly African-American and Afro-Caribbean community, Cambria Heights, is within a large section of Eastern Queens with few landmarks and historic districts. These blocks were identified as part of a survey of Queens rowhouse developments of the 1920s and 30s, many of which were designed in the Tudor revival style to better understand what makes some developments stand out more meritorious, as more meritorious architecturally. Due to the creative application of the storybook style and the intact historic character on both sides of the street and its very strong sense of place in both districts, they stood out in the survey and in the neighborhood. In public testimony, LPC received support for designation from Councilmember Idanique Miller, the New York Landmarks Conservancy, the Four Borough Neighborhood Preservation Alliance, and individual property owners. We had support from four on 227th Street and three on 222nd. Two residents of the 227th Street District opposed designation. And at the public hearing, two people raised questions about designation and regulation. The next slide, please. In the course of designating these districts, staff did a great deal of outreach and had conversations with property owners to provide information about working with LPC and the benefits and responsibilities of historic district designation. This included virtual meetings prior to calendaring. And after designation, when we, I mean, after public hearing when we had questions, we held a, a meeting in a community garden outside the 227th Street District. It was actually our first in-person meeting after the worst of the pandemic. And it, we had a really good turnout. And we were able to talk to people about our process. We did hear some opposition following that meeting and were able to talk with people. And really, as the course of our outreach continued, we, we felt and gained more support for this. We also partnered with the Landmarks Conservancy to offer a workshop about stained glass windows, which are a particular feature in this district, to talk about repair strategies. Next slide, please. So just quickly, a historical overview. This neighborhood is on the border of Nassau County, and it remained mostly farmland well into the 20th century, as you can see in the slide of just farmland. Until the 1890s, it was part of Jamaica. And it wasn't referred to as Cambria Heights until after 1917, when the Cambria Title Savings and Trust Company purchased a large area here. The next slide, please. As infrastructure investment shifted more towards highways and automobiles by the 1930s, Queens saw the development of parkways, part of Robert Moses's Long Island Parkway Network. And despite the Depression, thousands of homes were under construction in southeastern Queens by this time, which was noted, quote, "as an expression on the part of the people of New York City that they still love trees and lawns and sunshine." Next slide, please. So as I said, we studied Tudor revival rowhouse development in Queens. Tudor revival, we do see in a lot of rowhouse design. It's in New York City as early as the 1910s. This is a historic district, the Chester Court District, where we see that style. The storybook style, we really understand as its own style that did incorporate some elements that you see in Tudor revival, but really took on its own character. It originated in California in the 1920s. And it's really characterized by a very fanciful and whimsical application of historic features. A lot of different textures and colors are characteristic of that style. Next slide, please. So both of these districts feature distinctive rows of expressive facades designed in the storybook style. And they have a stage-set quality of a Hollywood backdrop or a fairy tale illustration. Architectural features including the vertically stretched entrance vestibules with flared eaves, the half-timbering, diamond-paned windows, Tudor-arched window openings, stucco fields with randomly laid brick and stone accents, and multicolored tile roofs are characteristic of the style. Next, please. In planning both districts, builders adapted a model first widely used in the 1920s in Jackson Heights, Queens. Driveways behind the houses provide access to rear garages, which relegated the automobiles to the interior of the block and allowed for continuous landscape front lawns, which really add to the character of both of these districts. Both were started development in 1931, were marketed as part of the Parkway Homes of St. Albans. Next slide, please. Initially, residents of both these historic districts were white, middle-class families. Black families began moving to Cambria Heights by the 1950s, often overcoming opposition, even overt hostility from some white residents and real estate brokers. By the 1980s, they were joined by immigrant families from Korean Caribbean countries, including Jamaica, Haiti, Trinidad and Tobago, Guyana, and Barbados. Today, Cambria Heights remains one of several prosperous, predominantly Black residential communities in southeastern Queens. Next, please. And very quickly, just to show some analysis, both of these districts are remarkably cohesive, built in the same year, 1931, in the same style, with very intact architecture on both sides of the street. Next, please. And this is just an image on 222nd Street highlighting the chimneys here, no two of which are alike. And next slide, please. Showing 227th Street, also highly cohesive and intact. And here, the uninterrupted front lawns are really quite striking and add to the character of that district. And next slide, please. To conclude, with their fanciful storybook-style designs, these well-preserved historic districts are among the architectural highlights of the Cambria Heights neighborhood and southeastern Queens. The blocks have important history, and the property owners have been excellent stewards of these historic buildings. So LPC is pleased to add both districts to the city's significant collection of designated places. And we hope City Council will uphold these designations. Thank you.
Thank you. I now invite my colleagues to ask questions. Anybody have questions?
Yes. As I'm joking with my colleagues about how it's so interesting to hear people talk about a neighborhood that you grew up in with such admiration, because, you know, born and raised, I'm like, oh, this is the connector houses down the block. So it is really exciting. Anyway, my question, what are the consequences of not landmarking these two blocks?
The consequences of not landmarking them? Well, I think we would really miss an opportunity to draw attention to the history and to protect the, the character of both of these blocks. And I think we are very excited to, to start here. You know, this, this kind of type and character of architecture, it, it is, it is important to New York City, but also these neighborhoods that have history that we haven't told that story yet of, in particular, you know, communities less well represented by landmark designations. We do think that's very important. So we're, we're very glad to have designated these.
Okay. Thank you. And I know we've spoken about this, and as you, or as I alluded to, I do have another landmarked or historic district in my district. And one of the things that I've heard is that it's really expensive, they have to work with the city to do anything with their homes. And so if you just talk a little bit about whether or not landmark status makes the upkeep of homes more expensive or complicated for homeowners?
Sure. And I think that's a good question. And that's one of the reasons why we do so much community engagement and outreach, so that we can help people understand the process of, of working with the Landmarks Commission. A few things, I think designation doesn't compel people to make changes to their buildings. They bring their own proposals to us, and we work with them to make sure that it's appropriate to their historic building. We also don't require that people hire a specific architect or contractor, so that really doesn't change. And a lot of work to, to work on a building is involved in the labor cost. And so a lot of, you know, what it would take to, say, do a facade restoration with the appropriate mortar, or is that, that price really doesn't change working with us. And so, and we also are able to provide guidance to people that they are making changes that actually support the long-term life of their building in a way. So, but there, you know, it is another layer of regulation. There, there is a process that we, that we go through. Our staff tries to be very public service, sort of service-oriented and help people really do what they want to do with their building. And then I would say that I think the, the commission has also approved replacement materials. That you hear a lot of things about the sort of price of materials that are required in a historic restoration. And we do try to work with people to find products and materials that can fit with their budget.
Okay. Do you continue the engagement, though, like after this process? Or is it that they have to proactively reach out to you? But, because similar to when we were trying to get the designation, there was proactive research. Do you continue, like this proactive outreach to homeowners?
We do. We try to, especially for new districts. And, and so we have, we have open office hours where people can talk directly to LPC staff. And we also do what we call the LPC 101 Information Sessions. And so if a community is interested, we're happy to do that. And we, we do try to do that with our sort of more recently designated districts.
Okay. Thank you. And last but not least, very similar, well, this is actually not my last question. I have one more after this, very brief. Does the landmark status, similar to the previous question, make it difficult to retrofit homes with new sustainable technologies? So solar panels or insulated windows, is there any impacts there?
That's another really good question, and it's so important because we, preservation is, you know, preserving existing buildings is actually very sustainable practice. But we are also very supportive of renovations that lend to a more resilient city and more sustainable buildings. And so we do approve solar panels, we do approve insulated windows. And there are ways often to insulate windows on the interior without impacting the exterior appearance of that. So that's something that our staff does work carefully with property owners to, to encourage.
Okay. And this is really my final question, which is a wonky thing. And I know we might have reached out to you all about it. But on 222nd Street, the property owners that live on 222nd Street, as I'm sure you were aware, they're dealing with an issue behind their properties and the shared driveway easement. And so could you talk about any support or how? And so could you talk about any support, or how the landmark can help, or make it more difficult for them to address the issue, which is, for the record, part of a shared driveway unfortunately ended up on the city's registry. It was sold. And now the owner who just literally bought the end of a shared driveway can't do anything with it, is essentially trying to extort the property owners and force them to pay him to buy it, or pay him to have access to their shared driveway. So they did say something to me when I met with them the other day, like, oh, we're being landmarked, is there something that they can do? And so on their behalf, I just wanted to also ask that question, as they are about to have this historic district, they are dealing with a very cumbersome issue behind their beautiful facade properties.
Yeah, that is a very strange and difficult situation, and thank you for bringing it up. And I'll just address one part of it, and then pass it on to Sonia, who's been dealing with this also. The designation includes the lots of the row houses, and those lots do include this shared driveway that is privately owned, so it's carried with the deeds. So it's not a mapped street, it's not a city-public street. It is their private property, and we understand that that has had some challenges. The site you're talking about is actually outside of the district, but we did speak with property owners a lot about the driveway. And because historic district designation is really focused on the architectural character of the primary facades most, our regulation is looking at those primary facades that face 222nd Street. And then, so changes that may need to be done at the rear, there's, you know, there's sort of rear garage entries and stuff back there, there's a lot more flexibility in terms of working with us. So I think what we can do is sort of help facilitate, maybe, you know, what people need to do back there, without being a sort of regulatory burden on them. But I'll let Sonia talk to that property.
And so I do know that we have been in conversation with your staff about this. And so as Kate mentioned, you know, designation shouldn't hinder any of that work, but I'd be happy to talk further and meet later and see if there's any other agencies that we can speak to, or any other coordination we can do to try to help get this resolved.
Thank you so much, and thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Councilmember. This application is now closed. If there are no further questions, but I'll hand it over to council.
Actually, Chair, we just need to do the public testimony first, so we just skip to that part. So we're just going to ask the applicant to remain, because we actually have to do two separate hearings for 227 and 222. So maybe we'll just have you, for the second hearing, just refer back to your testimony you gave, since you have them together. So so we're just going to go ahead, call for any public testimony, which I believe there's no, I'm just confirming with staff, and then close this hearing, open the other one, and then just have you make some kind of a statement about it. So I'm assuming as the three of you, the same would be testifying? Okay, just making sure. So Chair, there are no members of the public here to testify on 222. So on the Zoom, and again, if there's anyone here to testify for that item, just come up to the front. Doesn't look like there's anybody, so now we can go ahead and close the hearing, Chair, for 222.
All right. So the application for 222 is closed. I'm going to now open 227. I will now open the public hearing on LU 109 relating to the Cambria Heights 227th Street Historic District designation, which includes approximately 50 buildings, also in Council Member Williams District in Queens. For anyone wishing to testify on this item remotely, if you have not already done so, you must register online, and you you may do that now by visiting the council's website, council.nyc.gov/land use. Council, please call the panel.
So we have our LPC panel, so it's, can you please state your names? Once again, for me, I don't want to butcher your name twice, so can you please state your names?
Sure. Kate Lemus-McHale.
Sonia Gior.
Benjamin Wallin.
And I'll just remind you that all three of you are still under oath, so Chair, we can proceed.
Thank you once again for the viewing public. If you need an accessible version of the presentation, please send an email request to landusetestimony@council.nyc.gov. I'll open it back up to the panel if you have anything else to add.
I believe that we covered everything in our previous testimony. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from any of our colleagues who have disappeared? No? Okay. Thank you, Councilmember. Being no further questions, this applicant panel is excused. Council, are there any members online?
No members online, Chair. And again, if there's anyone here to testify on the historic district items, please come to the front. Doesn't look like there's anybody, Chair, so we can go ahead and close the hearing.
All right, members of the public, oh, this is a wonky kind of day. All right. Well, thank you all for testifying earlier, we appreciate you. There, since there's no questions, this witness panel is now excused. Council, please call the next panel?
We're closing the hearing.
Oh, this is officially closed. All right, we're going to go to the next thing now. Thank you so much, and we'll stand at ease.
Meeting will stand at ease for a couple minutes, and we're going to do the DEP hearing next, or if the DEP site applicants want to come and settle in the front, that would
All right, we're back. I am, we will now open the public hearing for LU 104, 105, 106, and 107 relating to the 705 10th Avenue DEP Site Redevelopment Proposal in Councilmember Botcher's District in Manhattan. This proposal seeks a U-DAP designation with a disposition approval, zoning special permits, and an Article 11, right, property tax exemption to facilitate the development of a new eight-story mixed-use building with approximately 157 units of affordable housing, ground-floor community facility, and a publicly accessible open space to be operated by the New York City Department of Parks and Recreation on a DEP site within the Clinton/Hell's Kitchen neighborhood of Manhattan. For anyone wishing to testify on this item remotely, if you have not already done so, you must you must register online, and you may do that now by visiting the council's website, council.nyc.gov/landuse. Councilmember Botcher, do you have remarks?
Yes, thank you so much. Thank you, Chair Lewis, for this hearing and for giving me and our community the opportunity to speak on this application. The proposed mixed-use eight-story building would provide approximately 157 permanently affordable units, a community arts and culture facility, a public comfort station accessible from a DEP-owned, Parks Department-operated, public, open space. So this has the potential to be a big, big win for the community. This project, like so many that we've been hearing over the last eight months, came from the de Blasio administration and my predecessor. But even further back from that, it really comes out of a 2009 proposal to develop the Hudson, the Western Rail Yard site in Hudson Yards. And it was agreed in 2009 that this new building on the site would include permanently affordable units with an AMI mix of 165% and under, and that 50% of the units would contain two or more bedrooms, which brings us to today, when we as a council had the opportunity to review this application and come up with something that works for the community. I look forward to hearing from the applicant today and the community, and working closely with all stakeholders, with the administration, with the Community Board Four, to come up with something that is right for our community and that helps the city. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilmember Botcher. Council, please call the first panel for this item.
The applicant panel includes, and apologies if I mispronounce your names, you can correct me when you speak, Melissa Otten, Stephen Charnow, Daniel Arno. Available for question and answer are Rosa Kelly, Alicia West, and Nick Molinari.
Council, please administer the affirmation.
For Ms. Kelly, Rosa, I just remind you that you're still under oath, and for the rest of you, if you can please raise your right hand and respond to the following question. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before the subcommittee and in your answer to all council member questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Council. For the viewing public, if you need an accessible version of this presentation, please send an email request to landusetestimony@council.nyc.gov. And now the applicant team may begin. Panelists, as you begin, I'll just ask you to please restate your name and organization for the record. You can start.
Great. Good morning, Chair Lewis. Good morning, council members. I'm Melissa Otten, Deputy Director of Manhattan Planning at HPD. I'm joined here by a slew of my colleagues at HPD, as well as from across the city. And I'm also joined by representatives of the development team, who includes Douglasston Development and the Entertainment Community Fund. I'm very pleased to present the Rialto West Project, also known as 705 10th Avenue, and also known as the DEP site. This is an affordable housing project, which will result in the construction of one new affordable housing development with approximately 157 units of permanently affordable housing, as well as ground-floor community facility space and a DPR public comfort station, which will serve the adjacent open space to be operated by the Department of Parks. As part of the ULP application, next slide, please. We have several land use actions, including urban development action area designation, urban development action area project approval, the disposition of an easement for the purposes of light and air, as well as for the transfer of approximately 39,590 square feet of development rates, a special permit pursuant to CR 96104 to modify height and setback regulations, as well as rear yard equivalent requirements, a special permit pursuant to ZR 74681 to develop over an Amtrak rail cut and ride play. So with that said, HPD is excited about this unique opportunity to develop over an open rail cut with affordable housing. And I should add that the city, after several years of working closely together between DEP, HPD, and Parks, is really, really looking forward to delivering a much anticipated open space to this community. So at this time, I'll turn it over to Daniel Arno to talk about the specifics of the project.
Thank you, Melissa. Thank you, Chair. Thank you, council members. It's good to be with you in person today. My name's Daniel Arno. I'm the Executive Director of the Actors Fund Housing Development Corporation, which is a subsidiary of the newly-named Entertainment Community Fund. We are a nonprofit development partner on the development team, and we've partnered with Douglasston Development, and I'm pleased to be joined by Stephen Charnow, President at Douglasston Development. So the proposed Rialto West project will include approximately 158 units of permanently affordable housing for folks at a range of income levels. Actually, next slide. In terms of the unit mix, it's in accordance with the Western Rail Yard's points of agreement. The unit mix includes 50% two- and three-bedroom units, and we see that 23% of those are studios, 27% one-bedrooms, 41% two-bedrooms, and 9% three-bedrooms. Building amenities include onsite laundry, fitness room, and bike room. These are all located on the ground floor, because the building does not have a cellar. This building is being built over the Amtrak rail cut, which makes the project particularly complicated on a number of fronts. Adjacent to the site, as has been mentioned, the site will be approximately 25,000 square feet of publicly accessible open space that will remain in DEP ownership and also managed by Parks. To support this space in the ground floor of the building, we will include a public comfort station, restrooms, with storage space for maintenance staff. And then finally, on the ground floor of the building, will also include approximately 6,000 square feet of arts-related community facility space to contribute to the vibrant cultural community in Hell's Kitchen. Next slide, please. In response to the communities' expressed concerns around loss of artist studios, displacement of working artists, and the need for commercial space for arts and cultural organizations, we are thrilled to partner with IndieSpace as our community facility tenant. For those of you who are not familiar, IndieSpace serves the independent theater community by providing affordable creative space for a diverse group of performing artists. For this project, IndieSpace will also partner with two sub-tenants, Artist Co-op and Waterwell Theater. Both of these organizations have operated in the district and are in need of long-term sustainable space, so we hope this will be a solution for them. Waterwell has also partnered and has been working with the Professional Performing Arts School, which is just a few few blocks away from the site, and they hope to continue that work in the community facility. And IndieSpace would program another rehearsal space with historically excluded artists in need of long-term space to develop their work. We're really thrilled to be partnering with IndieSpace. Hopefully, you'll hear from Randy Berry later, who's at the helm of that organization. Next slide, please. In terms of the income mix, this project's financed with the HPD Mix and Match term sheet, which provides housing for, again, households at a wide range of incomes. As many of you know, any project that receives city subsidy requires set aside for formerly homeless through the OurSpace program, so that's the 15%. Then we have 25% of the units at 50% of AMI, 20% at 80%, 30% of the units are at 120% of AMI, and then finally, we added an additional AMI band at 130%. This was in response to what we had heard the need was, both from the Community Board and also from the council member, so we do have that additional 10% at 130% of AMI. Next slide, please. In terms of the design, the proposed development will rise 77 feet and eight stories, which again is in accordance with the Western Rail Yard's point of agreement. The project is designed by S9 architects, and we're happy to report that we've gotten really good feedback on the design, both pre-ULP, when we were having our outreach stakeholder meetings, and also during the ULP process. The building design pulls from the industrial character that you can see farther west in the district, along the water. In the proposed building, you'll see that industrial character reflected in the brick materials and also the large loft-like windows. We also have a mix of materials. There's a metal panel portion that's really intended to help break up the facade and keep it in context with the neighboring buildings. And as it relates to sustainability, the proposed development will meet the requirements of Enterprise Green Communities 2020 and the Energy Star multifamily new construction. of Enterprise Green Communities 2020 and the Energy Star multifamily new construction programs. Next slide. That brings us to the end of the presentation. Again, we're really thrilled to be partnering with Douglasston on this project, working with IndySpace on the community facility. And as mentioned, this is a very complex project for a number of reasons, primarily building over that rail cut. It has required a ton of city agency coordination, so it truly is a collaborative effort, and I don't think we could be at this point otherwise. So we're really excited to continue our work with the city, the community, and all stakeholders to really deliver a long-term community asset that can be, that's a benefit to the community. So thank you.
Thank you. I have two quick questions, and I'll hand it over to Councilmember Botcher. Great. Can HPD explain how the targeted income levels for the project address the needs of residents at the neighborhood and, in the neighborhood and citywide scale?
Sure. So, you know, throughout this process, we have heard from the community board that, you know, they're looking for more middle and moderate income units on this particular site. The Mix and Match Term Sheet is the closest term sheet we had to serving those requests. You know, the community asked that we do more, so we added that 120 to 130% AMI tier early on. And as far as, you know, citywide, you know, this term sheet does allow for a wide range. So you'll see that we have the formerly homeless set aside, and then we also have the low-income units as well.
Thanks. And is DEP committed to maintaining the site status as public open space unless closure is absolutely necessary for the health or safety of the city's public water infrastructure?
I'm going to let my DEP colleagues
Okay.
... address that.
Hi, my name is Alicia West. I'm from the Department of Environmental Protection. Which one's on? How are you all today? Thank you for having us. So DEP has been partnering with the Parks Department on this site and three other sites in Manhattan that are similar for many years at this point. And I think through all of the work that we've done, both inter-agency coordination and our outreach to the community, we've really demonstrated a commitment to seeing this open space through. We actually have just completed two other sites similar to this one in Lower Manhattan. One of them is in Councilmember Marte's district. It's called Rapkan Gyal Plaza. Those are open, serving the public, and we continue to have our operators onsite uninterrupted, and that's been working really successfully. So we are absolutely committed to seeing this open space site through, and I'm happy to answer any other questions you may have.
One last question. I'm going to hand it over to Councilmember Botcher. What is the approximate maximum possible square footage of structure DEP could build on this site?
So, let me take a little bit of a step back there. DEP has no plans or current need to build a structure on this site. We have a considerable amount of infrastructure below ground, which is why in working with the Parks Department to design the open space, we really had to come up with a lot of creative solutions to ensure that we're meeting DEP's access needs so that our operators can get to the infrastructure for routine maintenance and any emergency repair that might be necessary. So that is all baked into that open space design already. And as I said, we have two other sites that are complete, and that's working well. Again, we have no plans to build anything here in the future, but DEP is tasked with delivering drinking water to nine million New Yorkers every day, and that is an ever-evolving task, really. You know, if you asked the city planners back in 1911, when they were building the Catskill Aqueduct, if they thought they were going to have to build a UV plant, they never would have conceived of that. And so one of the things that we try to do as we're planning moving forward is to allow ourselves as much flexibility in the process as possible. And so again, as I've said, we have no plans to build here, but we just can't paint ourselves into a corner where we wouldn't be able to respond to the needs to continuing, continuing to deliver drinking water throughout the city to New York.
All right, thank you. I'm going to hand it over to Councilmember Botcher. No further questions?
Thank you so much. Could you pull up the AMI slide, please? I'm looking at HPD's website, and I suspect that the AMIs here haven't been updated with the latest numbers. Looking at 50%, I could be wrong, 50% with the AMIs in the income mix.
Slide five.
Slide five.
If the host of the Zoom could pull up slide five on the presentation, please.
On HPD's website, the 2022 New York City area AMI chart, 50% AMI for an individual is 46,700. Here, it's 37,000. For an individual at 80%, it says 74,720. Is this chart out of date?
We're showing the underwritten rents here, so
Okay.
The rents are going to be underwritten to 47% AMI, for example, for the 50% band. But I can get back, talk to my finance team and get you kind of the explanation for that.
So the 50% AMI there is not going to match the area AMI because it's underwritten?
Let me talk to my finance team about a good explanation for this chart, and he can get back to you.
Okay. And the rents also are slightly lower in this chart than on the website? Yes?
I actually have an answer for that, and it's exactly right, Melissa.
Yes, and apologies for the confusion here. What you're seeing here is the underwritten range, which can actually be 3% below 50% AMI. So what you're seeing is 47% to include that range of 47 to 50% AMI, which is the range that we use for underwriting this. And so the number that you're referring to from the HPD website is exactly on the dot at 50%. And so these numbers always subject to change, but include, you know, are meant to be much more representative of the realistic numbers from our, that the team is using for their budget.
Okay. Thank you.
Absolutely. And we'll double check on this as well and make sure that we can confirm, but that's the general response.
Okay, thank you.
Absolutely.
I just want to help translate this chart for members of the public, because there's a lot going on here. The income eligibility range for 20, so let's start at the beginning. For people at, in the formerly homeless category, with an income of 0 to 37,000, the apartments, a studio would start at $215 a month, and the largest apartment would be $512 a month. At 50% AMI, which is 37,000 roughly, through 82,000 income, a studio would be $1,094 a month, and three-bedroom would be 1598. And then 80% AMI from 61,000 to 132, a studio would be 1,795, and a three-bedroom would be 2,639. For 120 AMI, that's an individual making 77, $554, or a family making 198, 600, a studio would be 2,262, and a three-bedroom would be 3,332. And at 130 AMI, that's an individual making 93,565 to a family making 215, $215, studios would be 2,729, and a three-bedroom would be 4,026. Is that accurately? Great. Could you talk about how, since the initial proposal for the project, the AMIs have changed?
Sure. I mean, we, you know, this project is very expensive to develop, so it's had really tight underwriting. You know, since the initial proposal, we have added that 120 to 130 AMI tier, but for the most part, it has remained the same over time.
In the initial proposal, the highest AMI was 80, and where you've landed now is 40% of the project is AMIs of 120 and 130. And 60% of the project is 80% AMI and up. I want to ask about the 2009 Western Rail Yards Agreement. In the 2009 Western Rail Yards Agreement, $40 million of capital funding was promised for both this project and the Ninth Avenue lot, known as the Lyrio. Can you walk us through the status of that $40 million? Has it, or will it, be spent on these two projects?
So the short answer is yes. That money is inclusive of HPD's capital budget that we use for affordable housing in this district, and we're actually working on getting you some numbers for both the Lyrio and the DEP project to show just how our budget is being used to subsidize both of these projects and also all affordable housing in this district and indeed across the city. But, so we're going to be getting some more detailed answers for you very, very shortly. But I think the big message I want folks to take away here is that yes, that money is inclusive of this project.
Thank you. The DEP green space, this has been a vacant DEP, I say it's vacant DEP-owned space, but it is used for, you know, there's infrastructure underneath. Incidentally, my first apartment in New York was on, was across the street. I was renting someone's futon in his living room for like $425 a month off a Craigslist. And I remember looking out over that site. And back then, the west side of 10th Avenue was like pitch black. There was really not much over there. Now, there's a, there are many buildings beyond there, but that lot is still there. It's just an unutilized chain-linked fence lot. And the community is very happy that that's going to be finally turned into green space with this affordable housing built over the rail cut. However, there is all this language in this land use action that says that DEP could take this site back, they could build something there. The community and I are not happy with the current language because while we understand that this is critical infrastructure and that DEP wants to, into the future, retain flexibility in how they're able to access it, there's not a lot of trust about keeping this as a green space for the community in the future. And how do we know that some future administration won't build some DEP office building there? You know, it's, you know, I've heard it happen so many times when, you know, right now, it's the, it's the underground infrastructure that's critical to the city's drinking water, but maybe in the future, DEP office space is critical to New York City's drinking water, or DEP, some other kind of infrastructure, and that park needs to be clawed back. We want to strengthen that language. Can you, right now, speak to ways that you think that language could be strengthened?
Sure. So, again, I want to, I want to take another little step, little step back. I think you acknowledged that the initial open space commitment for this site was a provision of the 2009 Western Rail Yards rezoning process. The final design for the open space on this site actually greatly exceeds what was committed to at that time. It encompasses the full block and creates 25,000 square feet of new passive recreational space for this community. So that's inclusive of the full block running from 48th to 49th Street. The original commitment was not the full block. So we have gone, I think, above and beyond in this instance, and in working with the community and your predecessor's office and you at the time, you know, we really made a lot of progress on what we were able to make available to the public. And I outlined a little bit for the chair, all of the public processes that we went through in working with the Parks Department and the community. I should add that, you know, DEP has, is funding the open space project with $1.3 million. We have a memorandum of understanding with the Parks Department that outlines the responsibilities for the design, the construction, and the maintenance and operations for the site and the other three that we're also pursuing, two of which, again, are complete and we're really proud of. We've also conducted public engagement. We did public input meetings jointly. We went to the community board on a couple of occasions. Community Board for approved this design in January 2020. And we worked really closely to come up with an elegant solution that really safeguards DEP's
I'm sorry to interrupt. Could you take down the slides so the public can see the video?
Oh, gotcha. Good call.
Thanks. Sorry.
No worries. So we really worked to come up with a design that meets DEP's operational needs so that we can ensure, because keep in mind, this is, this is water distribution for the city, which is critically important, not just for our drinking water, but also fire protection. This is feeding fire hydrants throughout the city, and we need to make sure that we can always be prioritizing, as the Department of Environmental Protection, always be prioritizing those services for, for New Yorkers. But that said, we also really value open space and understand it to be a critical part of community building in New York City. And that's why we've worked so hard and, you know, really in lockstep with the Parks Department and also with our partners at HPD to realize everything, all of, all of sort of the priorities on this site. As others have alluded to, this is a really complicated project for a number of reasons. But in working together, we've, we've really been able to balance what I, what I see as sort of the building blocks of community, right? Affordable housing, open space, and water.
Thank you. We're going to want to work with you a bit on that language
Yeah.
... and tighten it up.
We're happy to work with you.
Thank you. The timing for the green space has been pretty disappointing in terms of like how many years out it is. This green space can't be built until the building is completely finished. Is that right?
So, we hear you, and, you know, you noticed that there's a new UDAP for this project that encompasses not only the affordable housing site, but also the open space site. So
Could you spell out UDAP for the public?
It's Urban Development Action Area Project. And, you know, one of the reasons that you see us coming forward with a new UDAP that does incorporate that space is, as we were coordinating between DEP and Parks and HPD, and we started talking, and the development team, and we started talking about construction staging for the affordable housing project, we did realize that, you know, a portion of the site would have to be, of the open space site would have to be used to build the affordable housing development. And we determined that the most expeditious way to, you know, build both affordable housing project and and the open space would be for the development team to build out that open space if possible. So that UDAP allows us to facilitate that construction in order for us to do concurrent development if and where possible of both the um affordable housing project and the open space project. Stephen, is there anything you'd like to add on the construction side?
No, it, it, it's doable. I mean, it's. No, to, to Melissa's point, I mean, it, it, it's, it is doable. We'll, we'll have to have some for logistics and site safety and code requirements, use a portion of the, the park site for staging. But there's no reason why we can't work on the two concurrently. And I think that because uh we'll be able to control our destiny with regards to both, we can coordinate and, and be transparent with, with you in terms of how we move both of those things forward as, as quickly as possible.
Thank you very much. The building should take how long to construct?
Thirty months approximately.
And the park could be worked on concurrently?
Correct.
Okay, that's great news. I want to hear from the um from the public um today. Very important for us to hear from the community and looking forward to working with you more on this project in the weeks ahead. Thank you.
Is that all your questions?
All right. All right. If there are no questions uh for the applicant panel, you are now excused. Counsel, are there any members of the public who wish to testify on the seven zero five Tenth Avenue DEP site proposal?
Uh, yes, Chair. We have approximately seven members of the public who wish to testify on this item. And we're gonna call them in panels, and I'm gonna make the announcements for those um people that are testifying. For members of the public here to testify, please note that witnesses will generally be called in panels of four. If you're a member of, of the public signed up to testify on the proposal, please stand by when you hear your name being called and prepare to speak when the chair or I say that you may begin. Please also note that once all panelists in your group have completed their testimony, if remotely, which at this point, all of you are, you will be removed from the meeting as a group and the next group of speakers will be introduced. Once removed, participants may continue to view the live stream broadcast of this hearing on the council website. We will now hear from the first panel and um I'm gonna gather the names while the chair makes the following announcement.
Members of the public will be given two minutes to speak. Please do not begin until the sergeant-at-arms has started the clock.
So the first panel will be, and again, apologies if I mispronounce your name, Gene Daniel Nolan, Joe Ristuccia, and Paul Devlin. So Gene Daniel Nolan, you will be the first speaker on this panel.
You may now begin.
Starting time.
Uh, now I can be heard, I believe. Chair Lewis, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear. If you, if you can adjust your sound a little bit.
Council members, my name is John Daniel Nolan. I'm co-chair of the Hell's Kitchen Land Use Committee, Manhattan Community Board Four. Now, I live on Forty-Eighth Street, close to Tenth Avenue and the DEP site. And I've been involved in trying to get that site made into affordable housing and open space, both as block president and former chair of Community Board Four for over twenty-five years. I recall the deliberations as Councilmember Botcher reminds us of the two thousand nine Western Rail Yards Points of Agreement. We made a deal, it's gonna be a hundred percent moderate income. That was in exchange for lots and lots of low-income houses, which we desperately wanted also. We struck a deal. And now, almost a decade later, we are close to a deal. And with your help, we can make a deal honoring that agreement. I have to say one thing about the, since the Points of Agreement, Board Four has found, bought for, and supported the creation of over three thousand affordable housing units, either completed or under construction or public review. And I believe that the sixty percent of those units are under sixty percent AMI. So this is not a debate about creating affordable housing. We're committed to that. This is about three things. One, we gotta fulfill the board's mandate under the city charter to preserve the economic diversity of the district. Two, city planning, Department of City Planning fosters diverse neighborhoods with mixed-income housing. And three, honor the agreement made between the city and its citizens. So I think we can do that, but we've got to have some more moderate income in this project. For teachers and nurses and hospital workers, all the workers.
Time expired.
Keep our neighborhood and our city diverse. So we urge you to deny this application unless those modifications that we detailed in our letter made two thousand twenty-two are met. And we believe we can make this project worse work. It's a good project. It just needs a little tweaking. So we support our President Zaline urging, urging the applicants to continue working with the surrounding community and Board Four to arrive at an acceptable AMI mix as soon as possible.
Thank you, Gene Daniel.
The next speaker will be Joe Ristuccia.
Starting time.
My name is Joe Ristuccia. I'm the co-chair of the Housing Health Human Services Committee in Manhattan Community Board Four and a member of the Land Use Committee. Um, I want to commend the development team. Although our board has said, do not approve unless changes are made, this is one of the best projects overall we have seen, both in design and range of incomes and use of having an arts use on the ground floor. And of course, the open space. However, it has to be in a context. I have worked with this project for eighteen years. We identified this in two thousand four as a site for affordable housing. Our context, however, is a market rate unit in our district for one bedroom is thirty-five hundred and for a two-bedroom, it starts at fifty-eight hundred. That's why we asked specifically back in two thousand four, two thousand five, and two thousand nine when the rezoning is done on the west side, for moderate middle-income units to be included, not just low. In the past three years, we had five hundred and sixty-eight low-in affordable units built through inclusionary housing that was mapped in our district as part of those commitments. Sixty-two percent are for low income. We specifically ask you to redistribute some of the forty units that are, forty percent of the units for, to moderate middle income to serve the broader range of incomes. You should note that across the street from this project is an eight, as in July, the city announced an eighty-one-bed uh family shelter and a two-hundred-and-thirty-eight-bed temporary shelter. Down the block from this project on West Forty-Ninth, the Red Cross will be having a homeless asylum seeker welcome center providing social services. We embrace social services and we deal with it all the time. We ask for balance of what you do. And lastly, I would note to DEP, the majority of the infrastructure is between three hundred and six hundred feet below ground. That's thirty to sixty stories. That's where the water tunnel lives. And it merely is a valve chamber. So the majority of it is not accessible and needed for maintenance. I concur with the council member and I ask that our community board, we are howling in the wind to ask you to make changes that actually are local and need, and serve local needs. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Joe. The next speaker will be, um, hold on, let me get the name, Paul Devlin.
Starting time.
Good afternoon, everyone, and good afternoon, Chair Lewis and council members. Uh, my name is Paul Devlin. I'm the co-chair of Hell's Kitchen Land Use Committee of Community Board Four. I'd like to address a little bit of our frustration that we're here because our government has seemed to turn their backs on our community by cherry picking from an agreement that was mentioned by Councilmember Botcher, which was signed in two thousand nine to bring housing to our neighborhood that includes a wide range of incomes. It seems the city has only chosen the points of agreement that work for this immediate crisis. Although we appreciate the hard work that Dougliston and Actors Fund have been doing to build a strong development with the arts community in mind and including higher income bands than originally proposed, we remain concerned about the process which got us to today's proposal. As discussed in this two thousand nine Western Rail Yards Point of Agreement, that's about preserving the economic diversity of this district and to foster livable neighborhoods with a mixed-income housing and the necessary supporting services. There seems to be a trend in the city to be interested in building luxury or low-income housing, which only works to maintain the tale of two cities that our former city mayor once campaigned against. Ignoring an agreement that offers the necessary balance of housing in our neighborhood, which was hammered out in two thousand nine, is short-sighted to address a problem exacerbated by our current crisis. I'd point out that this problem stems from an approval of an RFP that put us all in this situation today. This proposal to include formerly homeless set-asides at the site should not have been selected if our government entities had all worked together two years ago. Community Board Four has long worked collaboratively to find solutions not only to our neighborhood concerns, but citywide and societal concerns. We, we would have been perfectly happy to find solutions to address our housing crisis of today while still respecting the agreement of two thousand nine to build moderate middle-income housing.
Time expired.
To be asked, to be involved, and once we did get involved, we reached another compromise by creating a donut hole in income bands, which we normally oppose. We ask the city agencies to go back to the days of collaborative efforts and working with us to create strong developments for our community. And we ask you to include even more housing for families and even more housing for moderate and middle-income. Thank you.
Chair, that was the last um witness on this panel, so.
Councilmember Botcher, do you have questions for this panel?
Thank um the panel and uh everyone in the community who's been involved in this project for so long. Uh, looking forward to working with you more in the weeks ahead.
Being no more.
And the years ahead, hopefully.
Being there, no more questions for this panel. This witness panel is now excused. Counsel, please call the next panel.
So the next panel will be Lori Klinger, Randy Berry, Randy Peralta, and Alyssa Hafkin. And if, again, if anyone here in person is here to testify on this project, please see one of the sergeants to fill out a witness slip. Um, again, the first witness on this panel is Lori Klinger.
Starting time.
Hi, my name is Lori Klinger and I am the um executive director of Rosie's Theater Kids. Thank you for the opportunity to speak about this important project. Uh, we know firsthand the importance of affordable housing and arts and cultural spaces in our community. Sorry. Rosie's Theater Kids is an arts education dedicated to enriching the lives of children through the arts. Our home is the Mariville Arts Center located at four-four-five West Forty-Fifth Street, just a few blocks from the DEP. And we also do programming in local schools. RT Kids was launched in two thousand three at PS fifty-one, a Title I public school bordering on the theater district where students would walk by Broadway theaters daily and never have the opportunity to go inside. The need for affordable housing in our community is so important. Eighty-six percent of the students we serve are from low-income households. These families should be able to live in the district and have access to all the wonderful cultural offerings on Broadway and beyond. We also recognize the need for housing that serves a range of household uh income levels. In addition to needing housing, we're also observing the loss of critical art space in the district. We're thrilled to learn that the project will have Indy Space as the community facility tenant. Their proposed sub-tenant, Waterwell, does incredible work in the schools with us and we're happy to see them growing deeper roots in the neighborhood. For these reasons, Rosie's Theater Kids is happy to support this project and the many benefits it will bring to our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Lori. The next witness on this panel will be, can we just one second, Randy Berry.
Starting time.
Hello, everyone. Good afternoon. My name is Randy Berry and I'm the executive director at Indy Space. We're thrilled to be partnering with the Entertainment Community Fund and Dougliston to activate and lease the community facility space at seven oh five Tenth Avenue. This project brings together critical affordable housing, much-needed open space, and affordable ground-floor art space to enhance the neighborhood and the lives of residents. For those of you who don't know us, Indy Space creates affordable performance or rehearsal space for the indie theater community. And at this site, we're very excited to be working with the Artist Co-op and Waterwell Theater to program the space. This district has a rich cultural community, but we also know that so many arts workers and cultural spaces have been displaced. We look forward to operating a long-term affordable workspace for artists and building upon the existing cultural network in the neighborhood. We're excited to find opportunities to serve tenants in the building and the community at large. We look forward to working with the community board, the development team, and the city to realize this important project and maximize this community benefit. If you'd like to learn more about Indy Space or our plans for the community facility, please feel free to reach out to us. My email is randy@indespace.org. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Randy. I'm gonna call on Randy Peralta next.
Starting time.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Randy Peralta, housing specialist at the Entertainment Community Fund. And today I will be reading the letter on behalf of Ms. Risa Shoup, co-director of the Alliance of Resident Theaters, also known as Art New York. Dear City Council Members, my name is Risa Shoup and I am co-director of the Alliance of Resident Theaters New York. We are a fifty-year-old service organization that provides nonprofit theaters with grants, subsidized workspaces of all types, and various professional development, convening, and educational programming. We pride ourselves in having a close relationship with over five hundred and forty members and as such, we know what is most important to our constituents, space to live and space to work. I am testifying today to express our strong support of the project at seven oh five Tenth Avenue. This project will create over a hundred and fifty units of subsidized housing and provide critical space for the performing arts community to create their best work. After more than two years of constraints on revenue and creativity due to the impacts of the global pandemic, this project offers critical resources to our community. Art New York is dedicated to supporting New York City's vibrant community of nonprofit theaters. We support our member towards self-determination and we provide them with affordable shared office and rehearsal spaces, as well as technical assistance program for emerging theaters. According to a two thousand nineteen report on the creative economy, finding affordable places to live and work for creative sector workers has become an ever steeper challenge, leading to profound migrations across the five boroughs in recent years. Housing has long been a crucial issue for the communities we serve and it has never been a resource that is easy to access. Our theater workers require housing in neighborhoods like Clinton and Hell's Kitchen, where many of them live and/or work, to maintain the vibrancy of the sector and thus the tremendous economic impact that the production of theater has on New York City. The project at seven oh five Tenth Avenue will produce essential units of housing in a community that has seen residents in creative occupations leave over the past decade. The displacement of arts workers is not only a loss for the arts and culture community, but also for the city.
Time expired.
In addition to the housing component with Indy Space as the community facility tenant, this project incorporates affordable space for the theater community to rehearse and create new work. As an organization that has already offered subsidized rehearsal and performing opportunities to New York City theaters, we are painfully aware of how much more our space is needed, especially since so many rehearsal spaces have closed while theaters are returning to live, in-person productions. This type of facility reflected at seven oh five Tenth Avenue is so critical to the city's recovery and will ensure that performing arts workers have places to incubate new work. Art New York is pleased to support the affordable housing project and we look forward to the development team's continued work with all stakeholders to deliver a project with long-term community benefits for years to come. Thank you.
Thank you, Randy. The next speaker and the last speaker on this panel will be Alyssa Hafkin.
Starting time.
Hello, my name is Alyssa Hafkin and I'm the director of, I'm the director of Social Services for the Jazz Foundation of America and I'm reading this letter on behalf of our executive director, Joseph Petricelli. Dear City Council Members, my name is Joe Petricelli and I'm the executive director of the Jazz Foundation of America. We are a nonprofit that provides emergency assistance to musicians and their families in times of crisis. Our services include housing assistance, pro bono healthcare, disaster relief, employment, and direct financial support. We work with two thousand musicians nationally every year, but New York is our headquarters and CB four is our home. We had offices for twenty years on Forty-Eighth Street, just down the street from the Rialto West, seven oh five Tenth Avenue site. And we're now located on Thirty-seventh and Eighth. Historically, we have served many musicians who live and work in Chelsea and Hell's Kitchen and who have contributed to the rich cultural fabric of the community. We frequently collaborate with the entertainment community. We frequently collaborate with the Entertainment Community Fund to help our clients and we are thrilled to support this project to bring affordable housing into these neighborhoods. The folks we serve lead a precarious life and often live on the verge of homelessness. They've worked all their lives, but don't have the same benefits, savings and safety net as your typical full-time worker. So many of them are still recovering and rebuilding their lives from the economic havoc wrought by the pandemic. Meanwhile, their music has continued to bring us comfort and solace during these dark times. They deserve access to safe and stable housing in this community. There is also a growing need for affordable cultural space. Places to rehearse and perform have either closed or have been pushed out of the neighborhood. We hope to partner on programming at the ground floor of community facility and present free concerts to neighborhood audiences. This development brings together affordable housing for those who need it the most.
Time expired.
Arts to thrive and a park. I can't think of a better use of the site. We hope the development team will continue to work closely with the community and the city to realize this exciting project. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Alyssa. That was the last witness on this panel, Chair.
Councilmember Botcher, you have any questions or remarks for this last panel?
Thank you to everyone who testified. Really, really great testimony and looking forward to working with you on all your endeavors.
Chair, that was the last panel for this item. But just in case, last call. I know there are no witnesses remotely, but if one, if anyone here in person wishes to testify, please come forward. Doesn't look like there's anyone, Chair, so we can go ahead and close this hearing.
Thank you. Being no other members of the public wish to testify on LU's 104, 105, 106, 107 relating to 705 10th Avenue DEP site redevelopment proposal, the public hearing